Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the April 8th, uh, meeting of the Nash County Bo- Board of Education to order. The first, um, item on the agenda tonight is we are joined for the pledge of allegiance, uh, by students from Nashville Elementary School. Wood Cameron Manning, Anna Brooke Jenkins, Isaac Paul, and Nicholas Allen. Come down, please.
Pledgeance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Awesome job. Let's give them a hand as they exit. Alright, and now I'll entertain a motion to approve the, uh, meeting minutes.
So moved second.
Motion made by Board Member Sharp, seconded by Dr. Chavis. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Uh, we are at item number, uh, just item number five, the recognition portion of our meeting. Dr. Ellis.
First, we have Emmanuel Perkins, Kennedy Farmer, Cassandra Pickett, Ayana Bellamy, and Delaney Cooper Pittman. These students are the Student Government Association at Rocky Mount High School. They recently attended the North Carolina Association of Student Council's convention and were recognized as a Louise Hunter State High School Honor Council. Congratulations to these students. Next, we have Cassandra Pickett, who is the 2023-24 North Carolina Association of Student Council's Eastern District Chair Student Representative. Forgot to read it. At the recent North Carolina Association of Student Council's convention, she was inducted into the NCASC Hall of Fame. Next, we have John Aiden Horn. John Aiden is a senior at Nash Central High School. He was recently awarded the Moorhead Kane Scholarship. This scholarship is a four-year, fully-funded educational experience for exceptional students, leaders to the University of North Carolina Chapel Hill. Congratulations.
Could you invite, Madam Chair, could you invite his fans that are sitting right there?
Sure.
Yeah, they, yeah, bring them over.
He's already wearing his Carolina blue. Unfortunately, he won't need it tonight. I'm sorry. Scratch that. Scratch that from the record. That was right in front of Dr. Pharaoh. I know. I'm a Carolina fan. Alright, so next we have Frederick Lindsey, Chandler Logan, Anne Marie Cobble, and Dimitri Braxton. These are our North Carolina School, uh, Governor's School nominees and alternate. Frederick is attending for social science. Chandler is attending, tending for natural science. Anne Marie is attending for mathematics, and Dimitri is an alternate for music saxophone. The North Carolina Governor's School is a four-week summer residential program for gifted and talented high school students, integrating academic disciplines, the art, and the unique courses on each two campuses. Learning focuses on the exploration of the most recent ideas and concepts in each discipline, and it does not involve credit, tests, or grades. Students are selected to attend it through a competitive process after being nominated by their school. There were nineteen hundred and five applications submitted from across the state. Nash County Public Schools submitted thirteen student applications. We had three applications expect, accepted and one alternate. Congratulations. And last, we have Heather Finch, Caroline Johnson, and Sarita Lamb. They should be close. This is the Nash County Public Schools Communication Planning and Engagement Team. These ladies recently attended the North Carolina School Public Relations Association Blue Ribbon Award, hang on ladies, ceremony in High Point. They brought back two gold awards for photography and digital media engagement, two silver awards for image graphic design, and marketing, and a bronze award for excellence in writing. Hang on, is it? And one more. Congratulations.
Alright, let's give everyone a hand as they exit. Alright, we are now at, um, agenda item number six, the public input. Each month, a part of at least one regularly scheduled board meeting will be set aside for citizens to address the board through public comment. A sign-up sheet will be available in the communications office for any individual or group to indicate their desire to address the board. The deadline is noon the day of the board meeting. Any individual or group can sign up by appearing in person or by calling the communications office. The chairperson will decide the amount of time devoted to public comments, and that is three minutes. The superintendent shall develop additional procedures to ensure that public comment sessions proceed in a, in an efficient and orderly manner. Board members will not respond to individuals who address the board except to request clarification on points made. Except in cases of emergency, information received during the presentations will, will not be acted upon at the time it is received. It will take a unanimous vote of the board members present to take action on a presentation considered to be of unusual or emergency nature at the time it is presented. Disruptions by any person or persons of a public meeting will be subject to action in accordance with General Statute 143-318-17. If the board does not hold a regular meeting during a month, the board will not provide a time for public comment at, the board will not provide a time for public comment at any other meeting held during that month unless the majority of the board votes to allow public comment. Now, we do have one individual that has signed up, uh, excuse me, la- one last note. If anyone has further questions, please refer to Nash County Public Schools Policies 2310. We do have one individual signed up to speak on this evening, and it is Belinda Whitaker.
Good evening. My name is Belinda Whitaker, as forestated, and I am Client Services Director at a local nonprofit. Most importantly, I am the mother of an eleventh-grade honor student and superintendent student ambassador. Back in January, I requested a parent-teacher conference to discuss course grades in question that was not honored. The inability to get direct answers was alarming. Many questions were left unanswered as I attempted to follow the chain of command, which now brings me before you this evening. As a former educator and having many teacher friends, I know and understand the workload of teachers, and I applaud all the teachers that are doing a phenomenal job in the midst of conducting tasks, tasks that they will never be compensated for. However, it does not negate the job responsibility to perform duties such as conferencing with parents as requested for valid concerns. Until recent, I had never had an experience wherein responding to and conferencing with a parent was optional. I searched our school system handbook and the school handbook for a clearly-written policy on parent-student teacher conferences, and there wasn't one, although there are inferences as it relates to primarily student retention or misconduct, but not academics. I like to believe our school system is more than nice slogans, words on a page, and captivating rhetoric. In effort to maintain the public comments guidelines and be as general as possible, I will provide detailed copies of my concerns and written protocol attempts in hopes that someone would take a closer look, investigate, and dig deeper into what apparently went terribly wrong last semester. I'm not asking for favors, just fairness for all students entrusted to their various teachers and respective school leaders. I'd like to see better administrative support, accountability, and advocacy for a team effort to provide quality instruction and ensure student success in meeting the high standards expected by institutions of higher learning, the community, and work partners, as the Nash County Public Schools handbook states in its purpose. Thank you for your time.
Alright, we are now at agenda item number seven, our business items. Uh, the first item is donations. Dr. Ellis.
Dear board members, please accept this request for the following donation. Bailey Elementary School received the following donation. Keep North Carolina Beautiful Organization gave a thousand-dollar grant to be used to enhance the beautification of the courtyard.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make the motion that we accept that with great appreciation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion made by Dr. Chavis, seconded, uh, by Board Member Sharp for the record. Is there any discussion on that donation? Hearing none. All in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Um, next item is the Personnel Recommendation. Mrs. Wallace.
Good evening, Dr. Washington, Vice Chair Mr. Lamb, in person, and any virtual board members. Personnel action report has been shared and discussed. On behalf of Superintendent Ellis, approval is requested for the amended report.
Is there a motion to accept the amended personnel report?
Moved second.
Moved by Board Member Sharp, seconded by Dr. Chavis for the record. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Alright, agenda item number eight. Uh, we will, we will begin our committee reports. Uh, Mr. Dunton.
Thank you, Dr. Washington. Um, the Administrative Services and Operations Committee met back on the twenty-fifth, and, uh, we've got several action items from Mrs. Sanders along with some information regarding demerger and, uh, review of some of our departments. So I guess go ahead and start with Dr. Ellis and the demerger, uh, information that was shared at our committee meeting.
So, Mr. Dunton, we shared some information at a committee meeting, but we have now, over the break, have kind of developed a timeline that I want the board to kind of see, and Mr. Ward can present that right now. You'll get a copy of it. We'll send it out probably tonight or tomorrow morning, but we've worked on it today, and I thought it would be best if we go ahead and share a timeline with some of the dates that you want me to make. Mr. Ward.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
If we could, Jhar. There you go. Yeah, so right there on the, on title page, we just have the dates that are coming up for our community forums to share on the proposed attendance zone maps. And that first day will be April fifteenth at six o'clock at Winstead, and the second meeting will take place April seventeenth at Nash Central High School gym. Okay, thank you. Um, so just taking you back in time a little bit, on Tuesday, March nineteenth, the proposed attendance zone maps were sent to the Nash County Superintendent and myself on the nineteenth for viewing. Um, the Board of Education members were individually contacted to schedule small group meetings to review those proposed attendance zones, uh, with a consultant. On March twentieth, the senior cabinet met with the, um, superintendent to review the proposed attendance zones maps as well. On the twenty-first, we conducted our first small group session with, um, individual board members with the consultant from OREAD to introduce you to the maps and get your input and feedback. Also, that evening, the reduction enforced communication session for all staff was conducted at Southern Nash High School at four thirty PM. On the twenty-second, we conducted our second Board of Education small meeting with the consultant, and also at the request of board members, we also sent out the, the maps to all board members for their viewing as well. On the twenty-fifth, the third session was conducted with the consultant with the third group of board members. I think we have one more group to go. On the twenty-sixth, the reduction enforced communication sessions for all staff was conducted at Rocky Mount High School at four thirty. On the twenty-seventh, the proposed attendance zone maps were presented to our, our cabinet and also to our principals via Zoom. Also, on the twenty-eighth, the reduction enforced communication sessions for all staff was conducted at Northern Nash High School at four thirty PM. On the fourth, our public notice went out to the community informing them of those forums to all staff as well. This brings us to tonight, the eighth, the board meeting. The week of the eighth through the twelfth, um, the calculations will be done for allotments for the RIF. On the fifteenth, um, at Winstead, we will have our first community forum to introduce the promos, proposed maps to the community and gather some feedback and input. The week of the fifteenth through the nineteenth, and we just went blank, there we go. Okay, the week of the fifteenth to the nineteenth, planning allotment meetings will be conducted. On the seventeenth, um, we will have our forum at Nash Central High School. The week of the twenty-sixth, determine which positions may be, um, reduced through the reduction enforced. On the twenty-ninth, we will have our board meeting. At this board meeting, our consultant from OREAD will, uh, be here that night with, via Zoom to present to you, to get any, any final recommendations, input from you board before we take the vote, um, the maps to a full vote in May. So the joint meeting with the Nash Comma, Nash County Commissioners and Nash County Public Schools for the budget meeting will be conducted on May first. And of course, May sixth, our next board meeting, we will seek board approval for the proposed attendance zones and maps and seek board approval for positions that may be reduced through the reduction enforced. And May seventh through the fourteenth, notify all staff of the RIF if implemented. Thank you.
I do know we have another Zoom session. I think it's Wednesday. Mr. Edwards will be there. If there's any other ones that want to be in the OREAD session Wednesday, let me know. I think there was only a few that hadn't seen it. It's gonna be a four, four o'clock view, and which is a little bit later, which will help if you're working. But if you want to do one, just let me know. I can just send it out to everyone if you can. Uh, four o'clock will be. Cause we want to make sure we finish, really before we go to the community meeting, so you all have seen these maps. And I think, uh, the way OREAD explains it is probably better to us. So if you want to get on that, let me know, or I might just blast an email to you.
Dr. Ellis, a question. So, I know I may have missed it. When do we actually release, I'm sorry, release that information to, like, the families? Is it during the community meeting at, uh, like, in terms of student assignment?
So what we're thinking of, and we talked about this this morning, is once you approve these maps, we can then push that information out. Previously, a few years back, letters went home to those students as to where they're going. I don't think it'll be as many students now, because it's what our district and the whole, you know, system. So I think we talked about sending letters out. Once we get the maps, uh, then maybe a site where a parent can look up where they go to school. And then maybe some help with Heather Louise and try to figure out how we push this out there to those individual students that have, uh, added effects.
And also the-
But those have to be approved first. Like, those maps need to be approved so we can then lock it in.
And I just wanted to just follow up in making sure that we have, um, the, cause we kind of talked about having a meeting with those parents and families to come in, so before summer or at least during the summer.
Do we have a total number of students who completed the process to remain in the district?
I think Dr. Pharaoh might have a count.
So we are, um, in the late stages of compiling that. Uh, when we looked at the numbers today, and we're still cleaning up some of the data, there was approximately a hundred and eighty-five students who had completed the, um, process. There wasn't additional ten who had completed the wrong process, so we're working, trying to get those parents. So we're still trying to check our data to make sure that, that we have all of our data correct. And hopefully, we have that before anything, come on, that was our time.
And that was out of how many students?
Mr. Ward was a three, three, on the latter end of, latter end of three something, four, four something?
So then that includes siblings?
Yes, ma'am.
Dr. Washington, you want me to move that along?
Yeah.
Okay. Any more questions in regarding to our, um, demerger update? I guess the one thing I will say is, um, just to put the emphasis on these maps, please, as board members, make yourself available next week for these community meetings. It's going to committee at the end of this month, and, and we can't kick this can down the road. You know, if we don't get this in with the May meeting, we're talking June before we're approving maps, and, and that, that's not an option. So, um, bring your questions. Make yourself available Wednesday at four o'clock. If you need to go through the OREAD presentation, make yourself available for the meetings next week, and let's, let's all understand that this has to be ironed out in our May meeting, and I don't think there's a plan B. Any questions before we move on? Apologize for not doing this on the front end, but as we met in committee, I was gonna amend our agenda to move item five up if there is no objection from the board, um, just so we can kind of flow through these a little bit better before asking the Sanders to come up. Hearing none, seeing none. Item five is the Human Resources and Finance Policy Review. Uh, there is a recommendation, Dr. Washington, from committee, um, for approval of this review as presented.
Alright, is there a motion to approve?
I think the recommendation is there.
I mean, you made it, but is there a second? A motion made by Dr., I'm, I'm sorry, Board Member Dunton, second by Board Member Beazette. Alright, um, is there any discussion?
So, just clarification. So what are we asking you to do?
So, um, what was presented and what was approved in, um, committee is a review of both of our HR and finance committees. Um, the question was brought up as to the timeline, which I think maybe might create some issues with everything that we're going through now, but it is upon approval of this, we engage based on the offer that we have received to come in, review, um, if you'd like me to. The scope of work is review of HR policies, procedures, and practices, make recommendations as needed, review of finance policies, procedures, and practices, make recommendations as needed.
And who, who are we talking about to do this review?
It's all in your board packet. It was in your committee packet, but I can find that for you too, Bill. That's, we got it, no problem.
School Operations Specialist.
Yeah. It was submitted by Aaron Bellew.
Bellew.
Bellew, School Operations Specialist.
That's an outside firm.
That is an outside firm.
So there's cost involved?
Uh, there is cost.
There's time involved with it as well?
There'd be a lot of time involved.
We're going through the process right now to merge one of the most critical parts of this operation, and we want to knock that off.
Is that a question or a comment?
That's a comment.
Alright, I have a motion. Any more discussion? I have a motion and a second on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
No.
Okay. You have it for the record, Attorney Weber. You have it.
Is there a timeline? This is all I'm asking. Like, do you, do you want us to start? I just need to know.
Again, based on the proposal, the timeline is that they start as soon as we let them know to engage. Um, I would imagine we could set, um, some stipulations as to completion of other things that- that we are working on, um, but it, 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 as presented, is upon approval.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
May I have a show where he has a roll call vote as far as ayes and noes, please?
I think we have it, the two dissent.
Oh, there's only two dissent?
Correct.
Okay. Wonderful program, right?
There's three.
That's what I'm saying, just make sure you're clear on it.
Is there any confusion on the count, record keepers? Okay, so we can roll call it. Uh, Mr. Edwards?
This and aye, yes.
Mr. Gray?
No.
Miss, Dr. Chavis, I'm sorry. Mr. Jenkins?
Yeah.
Miss, uh, E. Bullock?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Ms. Thomas Bullock? Mr. Sharp? Board Member Dunton?
Not at this time.
And Board Member Bisson?
Yes.
Is the record clear? Thank you.
And Dr. Washington, have a comment as well?
Sure.
Um, so it is a very confusing and, and chaotic time, and I do agree with that. Um, but given the, the current situation with the board, I think for clarity, um, so my, I want to be on record saying that it is not to condemn, um, anyone working here, but it is for clarity, um, because there is some, some concern and, and indifference within, within the board and, and the organization. I think we all need to be on one accord, and I think this will help us move forward rather than continue to hold us back.
And I would echo that every, every action this board takes is for our benefit, um, not to harm anyone, and this is a perfect time for us to get in perfect shape, and we intend to do just that. All right, so moving on to, oh, Mike.
Yeah, uh, we've got three more items, and I'll, I'll go ahead and call Mrs. Sanders up. She has three action items for us, um, that are all being brought to you upon recommendation of the committee, includes our auditor's contract, budget amendment, and, uh, local kind of expense budget, Mrs. Sanders.
All right, so, good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
So, I, um, I don't know what order these on the agenda, but the first one I have in front of me is the proposed budget that we intend on taking, uh, Dr. Ellis intends on taking to the county. Um, did anyone have any questions, but I do seek approval for this.
And it's recommended for approval from the committee.
All right, the motion on trias, yeah.
There's one on the floor, you second?
Yes.
Motion made by Board Member Dunton, seconded by Dr. Chavis. Is there any discussion on the budget?
And this is just to move it to the commissioners to view. This isn't approval of a budget.
Correct. The local, is item number four?
Yes, thank you.
Got it, just for clarity? All right, so I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
Next one I have, um, seeking approval for the auditor's contract for fiscal year twenty-four.
Item number two, this comes as a recommendation from the committee to approve the auditor's contract.
Second.
All right, motion made by Board Member Dunton, seconded by Board Member Sharp for the record. Is there any discussion? Yes.
Our discussion around this in committee, and this is for me, just to kind of put it back out there, is if, if we were to approve that based on the, the vote to follow, is that I think there was a desire that for next year's renewal, that we have some alternatives brought to us, um, for review of what our audit situation would be going for.
I recall that being correct, as, um, we were advised that work has already been done, so, I, I recall that being correct in the consensus of the board. So, that being said, um, Mr. Dunton, the committee makes the recommendation, is there a second?
Second.
All right, seconded by Board Member E. Bullock, is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Motion carried.
You might want to call the-
Roll call?
Well, I'm not sure that was unanimous.
I have no idea.
All right, was there any op-
Or, or proceed, or just pre- proceed.
Was there any opposition to the last vote? Thank you.
Thanks, sorry about that.
No worries.
All right, the last, the last item, um, that we are seeking approval for are the budget amendments for, um, our current fiscal year twenty-four budget. Um, I believe we have Fund One, Two, um, Three, Four, and Eight, all have amendments for this time right now, so seeking approval for those.
All right, this is budget, or this is agenda item number three under committee, uh, and it is, comes as a recommendation for per-
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Dunton, seconded by Board Member Sharp. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, same sign. Motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, and item number five, we've already completed that.
You're good.
Moving on to Student Support Services and Operations Committee, uh, Mrs. Thomas Bullock.
Thank you, Dr. Washington. Um, the Student Support Services and Operations Committee met last month. Um, we had two info, uh, items for information only and two action items. Um, I will go with the first, the Microsoft renewal contract. Um, I move that we accept the Microsoft renewal contract as presented by Mr. McQueen.
Second.
All right, motion's made by, uh, Board Member Thomas Bullock, seconded by, um, Vice Chair Lamb. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
All right, and so the second is the Light Speed Software Renewal Contract. Um, so I, uh, would like to move that we, um, accept the Light Speed Software Renewal as presented also by Mr. McQueen.
Second. All right, motion made by, uh, Board Member Thomas Bullock, seconded by Dr. Chavis. Is there any discussion on this matter? Hearing none, all in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. I do want to mention, uh, gotta love that village, Mr. Howard gave a presentation regarding the upcoming events. All who can come out, please, uh, support that initiative.
And I apologize, Dr. Washington, I was trying to move us along, but thank you, Mr. Howard, um, for all that you do and for your dedication to that program is really, um, really important, um, as well as Mr. Byer, because I know that's the, these are really, really heavy tasks and a lot to, to manage, so thank you so much.
Thank you, thank you. All right, item number ten, the Academic Services and Accountability Committee, Vice Chair Lamb.
We're starting out with field trips, Mr. White. Uh, recommendation to approve the field trips, would you like to come up and address the field trips, see if anything's changed?
Good evening.
Good evening.
So, before you, as we discussed in committee, we have three field trips. Two are overnight, one is out of state, Nassau High School with, uh, Skills USA, CTE, would be overnight. The overnight for Rocky Mountain High School was in the summer with JRTC. And then the out of state is Parker Middle going to Washington DC on five twenty-eight. And the superintendent seeks your approval.
So, yeah, I'm making a motion if we accept the field trips.
Right, is there a second?
Second.
All right, motion made by Vice Chair Lamb, seconded by Board Member Gray. Is there any discussion on field trips?
I have a question. On the out of state trip for Parker-
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I don't see any, uh, chaperones.
So, there are, is actually, uh, thirty chaperones for that trip. A lot of the teachers and their spouses, then they're getting approval to be a part of that field trip. And they're in the process of working on those and getting those all approved through, um, the process, make sure they're all in approval for chaperones. But, there will be about thirty adults that'll be attending as well.
But, we have not approved thirty yet.
Right, they're in the process, she does have enough male, female, to, 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 um, to have this registered for, for the field trip. So, we do have that number, but we didn't put the total number, because it'll be around thirty at the time, but they do have enough male, female to cover the, um, the number of students that will be attending.
I'm a little bit, um, hesitant to vote, uh, for, uh, this trip. So, I would move to divide the question, um, because I don't want to go on record voting for a trip that the record does not tell us at a glance, the chaperones or the number of chaperones, so.
Okay, so two options here. Mr. White, would you like to defer while you get your minimum information? Do you have any preliminary information today? Um, because I understand with field trips, time also may be of the essence, uh, for planning purposes, so we just need to make the best decision here.
I do know we have five female and three male, so that would cover the seventy-four or seventy-three students that are attending. But there will be more that will be attending as well.
No, Madam Chair, can we possibly, I, I am concerned as Ms. Bullock is, but in light of the timeliness, could that be something that could be added and brought back very quickly to us, or pending those names, those numbers being added? Because it should be, we have to have it in writing, it kind of goes with the policy, I think, but if we could have that fixed fairly quickly, if we could-
Absolutely, we, we, we've got plenty of time, it's, it's a May twenty-eight.
Do like background checks, do volunteer forms?
We do background checks.
That's what it goes.
Okay, so, would you like first to defer to the May meeting?
That's fine.
Okay.
Absolutely, we've got plenty of time, yes, ma'am.
All right.
All right. No, well, one does, Rocky Mountain High is in June, and then the other one is this month in April, so we need-
Okay, so if there's no issues with the remaining two field trips, we'll simply defer the one for Parker Middle School and proceed with the business on the other two. So, is that okay with the board? All right, so.
We already had a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion. Will you second the two, uh, with the exclusion of Parker Middle? Yes, all right. Is there any discussion on voting on the remaining two field trips excluding, um, the Parker Middle School field trip at this time, which will come back before the board? Is there any other discussion? All right, hearing none, all in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried.
Also during our committee meeting, Mr. Thompson presented a school name update. Information on-
Got it. Thank you. All right, uh, item number eleven, the superintendent's report.
So, uh, good evening, um, we are all back from spring break. In fact, we were an interesting group around three o'clock, and we were all outside looking at the eclipse, so, uh, I hope our students are safe. We were, we did have our glasses on, Mr. Stevens, we were fine. Uh, so we recovered, but what are the odds of coming back from spring break and having eclipse, anyway? Uh, we got some good news, Brick City Challenge was, uh, held prior to, uh, us getting out at Easter break, and I can say that Nash County Public Schools swept the whole event. Middlesex, uh, and, and I love saying team two, that means we had more than one or two teams at each school, but Middlesex Elementary won with team two, Nashville Elementary, team two was second, and Bailey Elementary was third with team one. I just want to thank Marcy Keener for her leadership in this. Um, it's, it was exceptional to watch, and it was just a great joy to see all those kids, uh, with, uh, activities. The next event, I believe it's, uh, this Friday is the STEM Design Challenge and Invention Convention, I think, is the nineteenth, so, uh, great news. Um, April, uh, first through the fifth was, uh, AP Appreciation Week, we gave them the week off, um, caught that, um, and I also like to congratulate, the, uh, Principal of the Year nominees were Dr. Wilson from Bailey, Dr. Dupree from Rocky Mountain Middle School, Kim Rasko, uh, from City, those were all excellent choices, but congratulations to them, and, um, not too, um, only a few more months, we're out of school.
Awesome. Thank you, Dr. Ellis, now for our chair's report, item number twelve. April is known for beautiful swing, spring weather and the star of warmer weather. I hope everyone had a great time viewing today's solar eclipse and, as it presented an awesome scientific learning experience. I would like to share with you a seize the day quote, and it reads, "Each morning when I open my eyes, I say to myself, 'I, not events, have the power to make me happy or unhappy today. I can choose which it shall be. Yesterday is gone, tomorrow hasn't arrived yet. I have just one day, today, and I'm going to be happy in it. I want to encourage everyone to make the best of each day going forward, as the end of the school year will be here before you know it. There are so many awesome events going on throughout the district, and as always, I want to extend a heartfelt thank you to all the employees throughout the district and our community partners." And our up, upcoming meetings and events, um, our next board, uh, committee meetings will be Monday, April twenty-ninth at five PM. Our work session will be Monday, May sixth, and board meeting Monday, May sixth, at five o'clock and six thirty respectfully. Um, if there is no further business to come be, before this board on this evening, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Uh, motion made by Board Member Sharp.
Unreadiness.
Second, uh-huh. This, oh, discussion, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. Hold tight.
I think there may be a matter that we might need to try to address before we resolve this evening in the closed session.
Uh, that is closed session, uh, business, um, we can speak with Attorney Weber, got it. All right, is there any further business that needs to come in forward this board? All right, hearing none, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Got it from Mr. Sharp, and who was the second? Was it you, Mr. Gray?
It was me.
It was Mrs. Thomas Bullock for the record? All right, um, is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please let it be known by the sign of aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Have a great evening. Attorney Weber.